Yeah, we do. All right, welcome to the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for the City of Belvidere, September 25th, 2023. If the clerk will help me out with a roll call, please.
Albertini?
Here.
Brereton. Brereton is absent. Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee? McGee is absent. Mahal?
Here.
Porter? Porter is absent. Snow? Snow is absent. We have five present.
Okay, thank you. Under public comment, I did want to make one, a couple of comments. One, on October 5th, Thursday, October 5th, at the Radisson Hotel in Rockford, the Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce will hold their annual dinner, and the city has a table, and so the aldermen, any aldermen or older women that are here tonight, if you want to join, feel free to. I wanted to let everybody know that. And also, today, we had ribbon cutting for the Dairy Queen, which has been long awaited. It was about a year ago, I guess, that we actually broke ground in a sleet, kind of a cold rain, and I was out there this morning, and I will say, first of all, thank you to Amy Nord and Lee Revels with our Belvidere Chamber, and the Chamber members that were there. I certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Do a good job. And also, thank you to the Patel family. They put a lot of money, a lot of effort, and a lot of decision-making, which I agree with. I think it was a good decision to come here. So anyhow, they did open this morning, and we had a ribbon cutting, and I want to thank them very much for locating in Belvidere. They have a very nice family, and a very, very, very nice restaurant. So thank you to them. Moving on, under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, item one, public safety unfinished business. We have none on the agenda this evening. Under item two, next page, public safety, new business. Item A, police department update. Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. Since last month's update, recruits Laura and Hauser are in Week Six Sock Valley Basic Academy. Probationary officers Bendel Ochoa and Venegas are in Step One of the field training program. Probationary Officer Hernandez did not successfully complete the field training program. Fire and Police Commission terminated his employment with the City of Belvidere. His last day was September 6th. Police Department has Fire and Police Commission meeting tomorrow night, where they'll be reviewing lateral applicant polygraph, and if he successfully passes that, they'll interview him, and then if he passes the interview, they'll offer him a conditional offer of employment, which will allow him to go to the psychological and medical. We currently have three officers who are on long-term medical, five in various stages of basic training, and one vacancy to fill, for a total of nine officers who we have to cover on patrol. Patrol has been conducting traffic details in the 900 block of East Second Street. Based on the data from the speed trailer, for the month of August, Patrol has conducted 13 traffic details in that area with 12 citations. That would complete my update, and I will field any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Woody on his report, or anything else? Okay. All right, hearing none. Thank you, Chief. We do have item B, which is a good segue, I think, into item B, with what you had just mentioned regarding hiring our recruits. And item B, Fire and Police Commission, new rules. Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. If you return to the memo in your packets, reference authorizing the City of Belvidere Fire and Police Commission to adopt new rules, creating a continuous eligibility register for entry-level police officers and other pre-hiring rules. The Belvidere Police Department has experienced an 80% to 90% reduction in entry-level police officer applicants over the last five to 10 years. In an attempt to keep our testing process efficient, take advantage of the changes in technology, we have worked with the Fire and Police Commission, Fire and Police Commission's attorney and city attorney Drella, to draft language that would create a more efficient, more economical, and more flexible and more convenient testing process. The Belvidere Police Department is requesting utilization of home rule authority to adopt new rules as outlined in the attached ordinance. I will request a motion to approve the ordinance, authorizing the City of Belvidere Fire and Police Commission to adopt new rules, creating a continuous eligibility roster and other pre-hiring rules as attached to the chief's memo of September 25th, 2023.
And before anybody makes a motion, on your desks this evening was an updated ordinance, adding a new section. I know the pages are not page numbered, but it could be on Page Two, and there's a new subsection of Two C, Section Two C. While both the attorney for the Fire and Police Commission, Ms. Holsworth and I thought the original ordinance was sufficient, thinking about, we want a little more clarity as to what this provision does, is it makes it very clear as to when an applicant can claim preference points for prior military service and other types of service. So rather than having it at the tail end of the testing process, they will probably be required to submit that at the front end, so we can have all those points tallied up when we create our list. So the motion, if the committee wants to move forward, be a motion to approve enforcement accounts and ordinance authorizing the City of Belvidere Fire and Police Commission adopting new rules, creating a continuous eligibility register for police applicants and other pre-hiring rules as discussed this evening.
Okay. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion, Alderman Flurry, thank you, and a second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay. Alderman Flurry?
Just briefly, how is this going to help the process, as it was before? What is this going to be doing differently for you?
So let me give you a side-by-side comparison. So currently, we have a process that looks like this. So we have a meeting with the Fire and Police Commission to get permission to test, solicit a contract from COPS and Fire Testing Service. The Fire and Police Commission attorney reviews the contract prior to the submission to the Fire and Police Commission. We have a meeting with the Fire and Police Commission to approve the contract. We sign the contract, submit it to COPS and Fire. We schedule a date with COPS and Fire Testing to administer the test. COPS and Fire schedules testing for us based on their availability. Sometimes that can take a month, maybe even more. Then they advertise the testing date and take applications, which will take about a month. Testing is all in person, with hard copy written tests only. If applicants don't show, they don't get to test, and COPS and Fire has a $1,500 minimum, regardless of how many applicants show up to test that day. Once the command staff gets the written scores from COPS and Fire, we schedule pre-screening interviews with the applicants. After the written and pre-screening interview, command staff meets with the Fire and Police Commission to review the scores and establish the initial eligibility register. Letters are sent out to the applicants who want preference points. After 10 days, the preference points are calculated. Meeting with the Fire and Police Commission to review the final scores, establish the final eligibility register. Then we get permission from the Fire and Police Commission to conduct a background investigation on the applicants. Needless to say, this process can take three to four months. Then, depending on how long the background can take, that could be, you know, potentially another three to four weeks. As opposed to what we're proposing, which applicant fills out an application, asks for preference points, applicant takes the written or digital test, pre-screening interview is conducted, command staff and one of the commissioners certifies the scores, applicant gets put on the continuous eligibility register, police department conducts the physical agility, police department conducts the background investigation, meeting with full Fire and Police Commission for review of the background. So in a nutshell, we're looking at a difference of maybe two to three, two to three months, which will expedite that part of the process, which is the initial testing phase. After the background, the remainder of the testing process is the same. So the commission will be able to weigh in on those parts of the process that are examined, such as the polygraph, psychological, they get to interview still. So they are very much involved in the rest of the process. It's just trying to make that initial application part of the process much more efficient, and allowing us to develop that list much more efficiently.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Woody? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, then, to approve the ordinance authorizing the City of Belvidere Fire and Police Commission to adopt new rules, creating a continuous eligibility roster and other pre-hiring rules as attached, excuse me, as discussed here this evening. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And I know that there was a lot of work that had been put into this, and it was proactive, because I know what the struggles have been regarding the process not being perhaps as streamlined as it could be, and I know he put a lot of effort in it. I know Attorney Holsworth and City Attorney Drella were instrumental with that, so I appreciate it. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Definitely team effort.
All right. Item C, Fire Department Update. Chief Shadle, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just briefly go over some of the major calls over the last 30 days. Over the last 30 days, we responded to 277 incidents, or 9.2 calls per shift. We did have a fire, house fire on Perry, and two other minor fires. 193 EMS calls, nine motor vehicle accidents with injuries, one water rescue, one elevator rescue, one gas leak, two carbon and two carbon monoxide alarms. Aid given and aid received was fairly balanced this month. We gave aid nine times, and that was in ambulances. And then we received aid 12 times, and those were all ambulances. We also received auto aid, of course, from all the area fire districts for the house fire on Perry. Over the last 30 days, there was 164 ambulance transports. 19 went to Mercy Riverside, 60 went to St. Anthony's, 21 went to UW Health Rockford, and 64 went to UW here in Belvidere. The EMS billing update, we are still waiting, we got our Medicare approval, but we didn't get our, it's called the EDI, the Electronic Data Interchange Approval, and that's Medicare system for sending billing information back and forth and processing reimbursements. So our reimbursements are extremely low. A lot of the other insurers, until everything is set up with Medicare, will not reimburse us. So having said that, at this time, we've billed out since May 1, 1.6 million, and we have received to date 14,352. We also are in the process of hiring a new firefighter, and we have one more step. It's the review of his psychological and medical exam, and he had those last week. Still waiting on the medical exam paperwork. I should have it by tomorrow to confirm at the Police and Fire Commission meeting. If that goes as planned, we will have a swearing-in soon for that new firefighter. Wanted to also update you guys on a new SMO, the closest facility. So you guys might, may or may not have been aware, but our ambulances had real strict rules about where people are transported to, and it was not always in the best interests of where they needed to go. So the, basically, the rules were, is that if it wasn't a level-one trauma, if it wasn't a stroke, and if it wasn't a pregnant woman, then our protocols required us to transport to the nearest hospital. If someone chose not to, then they could sign a refusal and then go to any of the four hospitals that we transport to. So that was creating situations where patients were going locally and then getting transferred out, or having potential other delay in care. Thankfully, over the past few months, we've been meeting with UW Health and our medical directors for Region One, and that's our whole region that operates under these rules. Thankfully, they updated that, and it got approved by IDPH, and now, so now our providers are able to factor in things like hospital capacities, hospital capabilities, specialties. So they're able to recommend which hospital would best suit the patient, and then, of course, patients always have their choice of where they want to go, so they can direct their care. So that is a good thing that happened there. Our inspector, our new inspector has been working diligently to work through our past-due notices that were sent out. Before he was hired, there was 349 businesses that were current, and now, since he's been here for a few weeks, is 387, so 11% increase in those businesses that are current. Past dues were 289, now they're 233, so that's a 19% reduction he's been able to do. Deficiencies was 82, it's now 80. That hasn't changed much, but he explained that as he's going out and doing inspections, he's able to clear up deficiencies, but then as he does inspections, then he finds deficiencies. So... Also, we updated our Mavis cards. So Mavis cards normally get updated on an annual basis. We had to update it because of the Lifeline ambulance change, and everybody providing their own ambulances. We also were able to, based on some of the lessons learned from the tornado, we did a lot of updates to our disaster card, and I just want to thank firefighter Kevin Fox for doing that. He's gifted in that area. It's something he really, really loves, and he knows everybody's resources in the whole large surrounding area, specifically the vehicles that they have, the fire departments have, and everything. So he was able to make a lot of good changes to our Mavis cards, and those passed the committee. They're about to be active in about a week. Training highlights, you guys know that we train every day, two hours in a four-hour window, well, 362 days a year, minus Christmas, Easter, and Thanksgiving. So, but on the rest of those days, we do train. So we had an IFSI Instructor Illinois Fire Service Institute from the University of Illinois come out, and he taught for three days, so he could reach all three shifts, a four-hour class on accountability and utilizing our command boards. So it's always wonderful when we have outside instructors able to come and teach us. We opened it up to the other departments, and a number of other departments also came to our training center, and got to have those trainings. All of those types of trainings are set up by Lieutenant Tangi, so I'd definitely like to thank him for all his efforts that he does for us. We also had outside instructors come to recertify our PHTLS. That's our, it's a four-year certification. It's required by our region as part of our paramedic certification. So it's pre-hospital trauma life support. So we came, and everybody got recertified with that. This month, we also completed our annual consumption drill. That is a really important drill that we do once a year. We have seven essential tasks of firefighting on order, and the firefighters do it in complete gear, on air, and they do one complete work cycle. That's for a couple of reasons, but one of the main reasons is to make sure they're able to successfully complete one complete work cycle, and luckily, all of our firefighters easily are able to do that. Lieutenant Thornton, right now, is in the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. They provide tuition and transportation-free classes to that. It's through the National Fire Academy. It's a federal branch of FEMA, and he is taking command and control of target hazards out there this week. I will close with, the union is helping us with breast cancer awareness and also raising money for breast cancer by, they came up with a T-shirt design, and there's money added to that cost for the T-shirts, and then our department members who bought them will be wearing them for the month of October, and then anybody else in the public can buy those, too. So it's on the Facebook page, on the union Facebook page. Breast cancer hits all of us. It touches home for many of us, and so it's something that we're glad to help with, and I want to thank firefighter Mead for setting that up. And that completes my update. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Shadle? Okay, Chief, I have a question for you. The billing reimbursement that you had talked about a little bit earlier, do we see any type of clarity with when that may be resolved?
It's just part of the process. They checked on it this morning, and there was something in the application that had gotten rejected, so the billing is working through that issue. Everything with Medicare and CMS, the Center for Medicaid Services is very, very rigid, and they're trying to identify what wasn't correct, and they don't really give us a timeframe. Once everything is set up, they're going to batch upload every single run, which is the majority of our runs, to that system, and then there should be a decent reimbursement at that point.
All righty. Does anybody, I'm sorry. Director Hanson?
I just wanted to add, the email they were waiting for on that EDI did come in this afternoon, and so it has been forwarded to the billing company, and so hopefully, this will be resolved soon.
Thank you for that. Alderwoman Mahal?
Thank you, Mayor. Sean, where does the money go exactly for what you're cutting off?
That, no, that is a great question. I don't know if the union's identified a charity. It's going to be a charity that either supports those with breast cancer, or, so it's not going to go to a particular individual or group of people. It's going to be, go to a charity.
But like a local charity? I mean, is this, or are they pooling money from other departments to the union?
Nope. So it's just locally whatever.
Okay.
About half of the cost of the T-shirt is actually a donation, and so whatever those proceeds are, they're going to decide, and it is the union doing that. So when it's all done, I will report back what they're able to do and what they did with it, for sure.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Chief Shadle? All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And item D, we have Fire Department closure of State Street request. There's a memo in your packet dated September 18th from Chief Shadle. So Chief, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to invite all of you to our open house. It's the first Sunday of Fire Prevention Month, which is October 8th this year. There is a typo in that motion at the bottom. It says October 2nd, but that was last year's date, so this year's is October 8th in the motion. But like we've done over the past few years, we close State Street down on the north side of the bridge, and then just past the firehouse, we use hard barricades, and we leave the PNC bank drive-through open, so it doesn't affect that. This year, a lot of that is going to be moved out to the front of the station in that area, and then, weather permitting, calls permitting, they're going to land the helicopter again on the State Street Bridge. So this is just requesting permission from you guys to close State Street for that event. Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel, we've gotten to the point where we're ready to move on with our 2002 Le France. Unfortunately, it doesn't run. It's not going to bring in much, and we, what we're doing is we've gotten the price from one scrapper, what it would be valued at to scrap the engine, and then we're probably going to set that as a reserve and try and do a public auction, see if it would yield more than that. So basically, the motion's requesting authorization to sell it by any legal means, and then obviously, Lieutenant Swanson's heading all this up, so I want to thank him for that, but he's also going to do what's going to net the most funds received for that.
Okay. With that being said, could I have a motion to authorize the sale of the 2002 American Le France by any legal means with the best value for the city? Motion by Alderwoman Mahal, second by Alderman Albertini, correct? Okay. Any questions regarding that motion? Alderman Albertini?
I believe it to be about $3,500.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any comments, any concerns? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye. And if there's any opposed, motion passed. Thank you. And we have item F, which is Fire Department as well, memorandum of understanding for the pool, acquired structure training. I don't know where to start out. I'm guessing I'm going to start with the city attorney. I know that we had, he had had some discussions and some comments and concerns about that, so I'll turn it over to Attorney Drella.
Quite simply, the Park District is looking to tear down, or I should say demolish, the former William Grady Pool. They're very kind and gracious enough to allow the fire department to train there. Unfortunately, I was not able to get the insurance matters wrapped up on our end, so we're just not going to be able to get it done. So we actually don't need to discuss this item tonight. It can be just taken off the agenda. If something changes, we'll bring it back forward, but I just couldn't get the insurance to line up.
Chief Shadle?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank the Park District for allowing us to work through that process, since the director's present in the audience. So thank you for the opportunity, and we definitely appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Director Jackie. I appreciate it as well. I think always when you do something like that, you want to make sure you have your i's dotted and t's crossed, but I'm very grateful that, you know, appreciative with the Park District reaching out. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like- I hope you've all had a chance to read it, but Attorney Drella?
Essentially, the mayor and the fire chief wished to revisit the city's ordinance regarding outside burning, and some of you may recall that for a long time, we didn't allow any outside burning at all in the city. That was opened up, other than through the fire department or for the school's bonfire, permitted by the fire department. That was opened up, oh gosh, eight, 10 years ago, to where you allowed outdoor fire pits, commercially-available fire pits. They kind of go to Walmart and you buy and put in your backyard, and it limits it only to natural hardwoods. You can't burn leaves or grass or anything like that, it's just for your own little private bonfire in the backyard. They asked that we revisit that ordinance and add some safety features into it. So what you have before you does a few things, and there's one more that the chief asked me to add subsequent to this going to press, so I have one more to add. But the first part of it is that if you're going to have a fire pit, it must be at all times attended by somebody at least 18 years of age. We don't want 10-year-olds out there playing with matches. They can't just be at the house, they have to be in immediate proximity to the fire. In other words, don't start the fire, leave your kids out there roasting marshmallows and going to watch the Bears game. Not that they really wants to watch that right now, but you have to stay by the fire.
Watch the Packers game.
Yeah, watch the Packers game, right. And then one of the things that they asked to add is something that we've been doing for a very long time anyway. If a fire is out of control, or they're burning in unsafe manner, the fire department goes out there and basically puts out the fire. The chief asked that we actually put that in the ordinance, though he has the authority to do that. I think he did anyway under the nuisance ordinances of the city, the general nuisance ordinance, but this puts it very clear for his officers to follow. And the one part that was not in your, the last part is, we didn't really define where you could put these outdoor commercially-available fire pits. And I don't think we've actually had a problem with it, but we want to make it clear, you're not going to put them within 25 feet of any structure, and not within 10 feet of a lot line. The structure would include not just the house, but include sheds, fences, anything like that that might be combustible. You can't put them near that. And the one addition that's not in your packet tonight, it was on, I believe on the desk, no, it wasn't, I just did it. They asked that they include either a fire extinguisher in proximity to the fire, or a charge guard hose or some other way of putting out the fire quickly if they have to, which is not currently in the ordinance. So those are the changes they're asking to make to the ordinance.
Okay, and Chief Shadle, did you have any comment?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay. All right, so we have that. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Fleury, thank you, and a second. Second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. Any questions, any concerns, any comments? Alderwoman Frank?
Just to clarify, so we do not have open burning?
We do.
We do.
We currently do.
We just don't, can't burn leaves.
The only, so we don't allow open burning in the sense of burning your yardways, you cannot do that. No leaves, no grass clippings, no branches, things like that. You want to, if you've got firewood and you want to have firewood in a commercially-available fire pit, you may do that.
Thank you.
I think as the city attorney had pointed out at one time, quite a few years ago, the council had made a change because it wasn't certainly in anybody's best health to have leaves or grass, especially wet leaves or grass. And when they were burned, we had individuals with, you know, breathing disorder, individuals that were sick, individuals that wanted to have their windows open on a nice day, and it seemed like the whole town was under a fog on the nicest day of the year, when you should have been able to go outside and enjoy the nice weather. Instead, you had to go, you weren't able to keep your windows open and you weren't able to go outside. But I do think also, as we know, the fire department, you know, I'm aware of, sometimes they do have calls where you have, you know, a grill, or you have a fire that's too close to the garage, maybe even in the garage, and we've had fires that have broken out. We certainly don't want to contribute to that, and we would like people to be able to do that responsibly. And I think the changes in the ordinance does that. A lot of this is common sense. Unfortunately, not always do people use good common sense, but if there is a call, if the fire department receives a call, or if somebody lives next door and they aren't abiding by the specific ordinance that we have, then I think it's probably a good idea to put this in writing, so. That's the basis behind it. If there's any questions, try and answer them, or the chief will answer them, so. Okay? Hearing none, then the...
I do have a motion, right? Yep.
So the motion to amend 74-215B2 and B3 to acquire, to require that all fires be supervised by an adult, to amend section 74-215B to add a new subsection seven, allowing the fire department to extinguish nuisance fires or fires which violate the city code, and amend 74-215C to prohibit outdoor burning within 25 feet of any structure or 10 feet of any lot line, and as well including fire extinguisher or means, water, to extinguish a fire be provided nearby. So I know the part with the structure, what happens is, I think, 10 feet of any lot line sometimes, and it's been very dry at times during the summer, and people have a fire and they'll have it next to a fence, the neighbor or them have a wooden fence, and that definitely is kindling. A lot of, a lot of those fences are, you know, as they age, they get a lot drier, and they're, they're kindling, they're subject to catching fire. So I thought the recommended motion made its sense. As I said, it's usually common sense, but that's what it is. If there's any questions regarding that? And hearing none, although, yes?
Pardon?
Alderwoman Mohal?
Thank you, Mayor. I do just have a question. So let's just say someone finds out that we changed an ordinance and they see a 10-year-old out there at the fire. What is, what is the consequence if one of these rules in the ordinance are broken?
First, maybe the consequence is the fire be put out. Second consequence of the police department's call is they can issue an ordinance violation ticket.
Mm-hmm.
Minimum fines $100, maximum $750.
Okay.
You know, we don't, I don't think anybody wants to be heavy-handed, but I think, you know, I think there are, there are reasons for these. We would hope everybody would, you know, have, would practice fire safety, especially the neighbors as well, for their neighbors, and I think they will, I think they do. Chief?
Alderwoman Mohal, to also answer your question. In 17 years, I only know of one burning ordinance citation given, and that was for a blatant disregard the second time. So it was normally, once we educate someone, the first thing that we do is educate. So this is our ordinance, this is what's allowed, this is how you could make this legal. So there's, if they don't know, we understand that. Now, if someone, in that case, they were burning furniture, and it was a large amount, and it was close to the house, and they put it out, and that next morning, it was lit back up again. And I asked the officer to write a citation, and he did.
Thank you for that. Just to kind of frame why I was asking, I'm not a great huge fan of having rules and regulations when there isn't a consequence. So it doesn't mind, it doesn't bother me if someone does get fined, but hearing you explain it, that you're using it also kind of as an educational tool, makes sense, so, thank you.
And I will say, I have been contacted, and I have contacted Chief Shadle directly, some individuals that aren't familiar that we have an ordinance. And, you know, I was out cleaning my truck on a Sunday, and they walked over to my house and said, "What, what is that?", you know? And it looked like, quite frankly, it looked like a big, big fire was going on, and it was somebody that had lit up some grass, some wet grass, and, you know, they, they didn't realize, in all fairness, they didn't realize that they were new to the community, but that we don't want to, we don't want to have the neighbors or anybody downwind of that, you know, have to have their windows open and what have you. So for the most part, I think it takes care of itself, and I think it has a chance to educate people, and the fire department does, does an excellent job, so. Anyhow, any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And moving on, item three, finance and personnel on finished business, we have none. Item four, finance and personnel, new business, finance department update. Director Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Morris. With the September 12th distribution, the city has now received 97% of its tax extension. You'll see the first of four distributions to the police and fire pensions in the year October payables. The fiscal year '23 audit is nearing completion, and SICAC should be presenting their findings at the October 23 Committee, the whole meeting. And the city has received a tax levy request from the police and fire pension boards, and we will present them to council on October 23rd.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hanson regarding that update? Okay, hearing none. And then we have item B, amendment for the IGA for Community Law Enforcement Officer, known as CLEO. Director Hanson?
Thank you again. You do have the document in its entirety in front of you tonight, but in early 2021, the city of Belvidere entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the county of Boone, and the Boone County Health Department to provide a full-time officer to assist in coordinating the identification, management, and outreach to potential clients and the community through the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program Grant, or COSAP. The program has evolved since its inception three years ago. As such, we are recommending an amendment to the agreement as follows. In section five, compensation, at the time the IGA was executed, compensation and the rate at which the city is reimbursed was based on a step one or entry-level officer. The proposed modification allows for the reimbursement of the full salary plus benefits of the actual officer in the position. An application to extend the grant has been submitted and includes up to 20 hours of overtime per year, subject to approval of the deputy chief. The addition of this language will apply only if the COSAP grant is extended. And then the final change, the grant extension, also includes reimbursement of 12.5% of the supervising deputy chief's full salary plus benefits. The addition of this language will apply only if the COSAP grant is extended. I recommend a motion to approve the amended intergovernmental agreement for Community Law Enforcement Officer between the county of Boone, the city of Belvidere, and the Boone County Health Department.
Okay. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Fleury, thank you. And a second by Alderman Albertini. If there's any questions, we'll try and answer them. Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Hanson, is that going to increase our responsibility, or is that going to be included in the grant, and they'll get it from the state or the federal, the funds?
So the grant actually covers all of the city's expenses. And like I said, the first change, as far as the compensation of the officer, actually just aligns with what we're currently doing. And then the other two will only come into play, again, if the grant is extended for, after this current cycle. But we will get, as far as the CLEO officer, it is 100% of their salary and benefits that comes back to the city.
Okay, so it's basically just covering for an advanced, over an entry-level person?
It covers, the new language will cover whatever officer is in that position. So if it's an entry level, then that's what it's going to cover. If it's a veteran officer, it will cover that. So whatever the person, the officer that is in that position, their salary and benefits will be covered.
And Alderwoman Frank, in answer to your question specifically, I think it is all covered, and there will not be, I know three years ago, or thereabouts, when we first approved this agreement, there was a question about what expenses, what overtime was going to come out, and I think in order to be able to give this legs, at least to crawl first, we had made an agreement. As it turned out, there were some shortcomings that were in this, that Ms. Hanson and I, and the Health Department, Amanda Mill, were able to figure out and work forward so that the understanding as it originally was, was lived up to. And I think this actually adds that, all of that into it, all the things that potentially weren't in that original one. And I know Director Mill is here, and if, any questions that we can't answer, if you have any, I know she would certainly be able to help us out, so. Go ahead.
Well, I just know that it's an entry level, and I was just, I know Officer Schwartz is not entry level, so I'm thinking we're just covering our bases to bring it up.
That is correct.
This fixes that issue.
Right, right.
That is correct.
That's, I'm just trying to clarify that, you know, she's...
Your clarity is correct. Mm-hmm. Yep, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, any other questions? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, nay? Okay, motion passed, thank you very much. And moving on, under item five, other, we have hometown Christmas event, street closure request. Excuse me? Does that bubble around here? We have street closure request from the Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce, and we have Assistant Director Lee Revels here with us. And so they're asking, of course, for temporary street closure for the upcoming, our upcoming hometown Christmas, which will be Friday, December 1st, excuse me, Friday, December 1st, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. And anyhow, their request is to temporarily close State Street from Lincoln Avenue to First Street, as well Logan Avenue, between State Street, Main Street, and First Street from State Street to Garfield Avenue. There is, you have that information in your packet, and could I have a motion to approve that? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderwoman Mohal. And if there's any questions regarding that, now's the time to ask? Not the only time, but the first time? All right, hearing none. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a motion, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you very much. And thank you to our Chamber of Commerce for putting this event on. It's a lot of work, but it is well worth it, so thank you. All right, we have item B, in your packet, an appointment memo from me, appointment of Steve Pierce to the Ida Public Library Board of Trustees. With that, there is a letter from Mr. Pierce that's enclosed in your packet this evening. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them. I would like council approval on this appointment, if I could get it. Motion by Alderwoman Frank to appoint Mr. Steve Pierce to the Board of Library Trustees of the city of Belvidere. And a second, if I could get a second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. Any questions, any comments, any concerns? Any concerns? I think his letter, I will read his letter, as a matter of fact, publicly here. Dear Mayor Morris, I'm writing to request to be considered for an appointment to the Ida Public Library Board of Trustees. I am a 28-year resident of Belvidere. I'm a lifelong farmer and I am a snowbird for IDOT in the winter. My two children utilize this library and took part in many of its programs. Libraries are, libraries are an important part of any community. They should be non-political. Libraries should first and foremost be a place of education for children as well as for adults. My hope is to see this library continue offer, to continue to offer programs and learning activities to our community. I feel I can add to this process using my farmer's down-to-earth perspective. Sincerely, Mr. Steve Pierce. So anyhow, we have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Pierce. If there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. And that's all we have on the agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Albertini. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And if anybody wants to stay? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. For the record, we adjourned at 6:49, 6:51 PM. Thank you.